Good evening, this is the President of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation under our invisible liberty and justice.
Okay, roll call.
Let's see, looks like.
Ms. Martinez?
Uh, Mayor, we have all councilors present. Um, Jan did say he was running late and councillor Jackie V. Hill was supposed to be on Zoom, but I do not see her on yet.
Okay.
There she is. She just showed up. So all councillors present with councillor Jan V. Hill running late.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Councillor Jackie V. Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, citizen comment. This is the portion of the agenda to where we have anyone who's in the audience and on Zoom get an opportunity to make any citizen comments. If you're in the audience, we ask that you come up to the podium and speak into one of the mics. Uh, we do limit the conversation uh to um three minutes. If you're still speaking at the three-minute mark, I would politely uh ask you to uh end your comments. We don't go back and forth and answering question during this portion of the agenda. Also, we practice civility here in Alamosa, which means that we're mindful, respectful, and we don't cheer or jeer for people who are speaking at the mic so that their complete message can be heard. So if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this citizen comment period, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium. So we'll go to our Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, if you can give them instructions of how to raise their hand so we can recognize them during this portion of the agenda?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this public comment period, you will use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. And Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, thank you. So what we're going to do is we're going to uh end this portion uh of the citizen comments and we're gonna bring it back to ceremonial items. Recognition of retiring council member Jamie Dominguez.
Okay, Mayor, we do have a plaque to present to councillor Dominguez, but I don't know if you guys want to take the time to talk now or after. What do you prefer?
I see you're about to say something.
No, I was just looking to see what you say.
Sure, okay. So what we'll probably do is um I'll have council make their comments while we're up here and then we'll go ahead and present councillor Dominguez with the plaque and um wrap that up. Okay, I'll start off with councillor Carson, work our way all the way across the mic to councillor Jackie V. Hill and then I'll 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 finish up everything with my comments. Go ahead.
Just want to say, Jamie, thank you for your time here, for the time you've put in. Do not think that I will not try to recruit you in the future again. Um, and and thank you for all the contributions, not just here on council, but everything you're doing for the community in general and uh man, just it's been awesome having you on the team and it's pretty sad to see you leave, so. We'll see you around, we'll be around, but um I'll keep nudging you. I'm not gonna be here for that that much longer either, so I'll try to push you back in here eventually, but uh it's been great, man, and I'm sad to see you go. Good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you councillor Carson, councillor Krebs, and councillor um Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Jamie's time on council was the first time I ever got to meet you and get to know you and so thank you for that opportunity. It's it's refreshing to see uh someone to come up and say I am the community and then stand behind those words, so I look forward to um helping you or participating in anything that you have in the future. So thank you so much for all your work here.
Thank you councillor Krebs, councillor Hensley.
So a couple of things. So I have known you for a little while, um but at the same time, um I remember, boy, really, when um you got the recognition from CML. As far as being our community member that really that shined and um made a difference and then obviously be coming on to city council, what a difference you've made and a ditto, obviously, what everyone else has said. But one of the things, I always try to learn from people, and I will tell you, Jamie, that you you're the way you listen and you put things together and you really look at things from all different sides. And when you speak, you're very well spoken and you talk with that empathy, but also at the same time, really from all those different angles and taking that into into account when you make a thought, a decision, or a comment. And I just want you to know that really has inspired me and it is something that I've really paid attention to and tried to glean to become a better person myself from what you've done. So I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you and I know you're gonna still make a huge difference to our community, no matter what you choose to do.
Thank you councillor Hensley, councillor Jackie V. Hill.
Hi, Jamie. Um, I just wanted to thank you for serving on the council with all of us and for your dedication to the council and also for your dedication to the community. I view you as a strong leader in our community and I know you'll keep up your good work and I just wanted you to know that it was a pleasure serving with you. Thanks, Jamie.
And Mayor, I know you usually like to have the last word, so could I say something?
Yes, yes, feel free and and Ms. Martinez too, if you want to say something, then I'll do it last after you finish.
So councillor Dominguez, um this isn't necessarily just reflective of of what you've brought to to city council, but it's it is the consistency you have in your heart to help grow leaders here locally and to tear down the barriers and the perceptions and to connect people. And um we're having our leadership retreat tomorrow and we had homework. Um, and I did my homework because that's I get gold stars for that. But one of the questions they wanted us to prepare is what's your favorite examples of your favorite things of your job? And that was one of my examples was when you invite me to be a guest speaker at the Family Leadership Institute and I get to be in a room just talking to people about our community and what the local government can do and how to how to break down some of those barriers and connect people. It's one of my examples of what I like most and it's not just because of when you've been on council because we were obviously doing that before that, but it's something that's been in your heart and carried forward in your role as council as well. And I just look forward to a lot more partnerships.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, Ms. Martinez, or Eric.
Put me on the spot. I just want to say thank you for your leadership and your friendship. I'm gonna miss you, miss having you on council and, you know, I wish the best for you. You've been a great person on council, so, and I hope you come back.
I want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Eric, good, all right. So um councillor Dominguez, I tell you, since you came on council, you brought a whole new perspective that I believe was needed here on council. Great leaders lead by example and it's so good to see that you lead the youth in our community by your examples and the way you carry yourself. You've never been disruptive or offensive in any way on council. You've always been mindful and thoughtful and in the way you put your words together to share your thoughts and I just wish you so much continued success in all your future endeavors. And for you to step down, um to be with your family, that's probably one of the most honorable things a person can do. And I really appreciate the service that you provided to our community. If there's anything we can ever do to help you or myself, I'm always here for you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go. Oh, sorry, you, your turn. I guess I don't get the last word.
Well, I don't know if I'm allowed to whisper, but I'm gonna be disruptive real quick. Um, I just I just want to say thank you to my family for giving me the time to be able to do this position in the last two years. They know out of anybody how much we got on all our plates and they allowed me to take this on. Second, my fellow council members and Mayor and this and you guys over here, I learned so much being here. I've always had conversations in community about how things work and there were some things I couldn't answer and now I can. And this this learning for me, just in this little bit amount of time, is so good, is so important to me because now I can go back out in my regular work and I can answer some of these questions. And I think there's just a misconnection between people and organizations and staff and employees that just simply, if somebody knows and says the right things, people understand how it works. And I think that's gonna be um one of my biggest takeaways from this is being able to go back and actually answer some of these questions without guessing and without giving the wrong information. The other thing is that what I've what I've seen this city do from an all the way from the mayor to the employee perspective is they're all the best at what they do. Above and beyond, um the budget is so tight. I mean, it's just it's just phenomenal what I've seen here. Going them going out of their way, employees, staff, everybody, just to get as much as we need to get this keep this city moving. Um, I never realized how much you guys did extra and it's really um it really makes me upset when the community don't understand that they blame the city for not doing enough, but they lack to see what they do extra. And this is huge and um like I said before, it's just a misunderstanding and I'm glad I'm gonna be able to speak to these things. The last thing is I'm stepping down because my daughter got sick and I know I don't have to share this, but I am because the community stepped up and and was there for us. And I just wanted you all to know that today at around four o'clock, she called us because her results came back and she's officially cancer-free, so. I just, this was not something I wanted to do. I was just learning. Mark, I wish you the best and I'm here if you need anything. And I just I just want to thank the community for stepping up when I needed them and I will always be advocating for this community and the city, um moving forward with whatever I do. So thank you guys for for being there for me and giving me the grace to be on Zoom, to still be a part of this while I was going through one of the most difficult times in my family, so, thank you.
Alrighty. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Oath of office for new council members and re-elected council members. Ms. Martinez, I'll let you tell me what order you want them to come down in so that we can um swear them in.
Okay, well, I have you listed first, Mayor, since you run the meeting.
All right.
And then we can do Dawn and then we can do Mark. And because Jan's not here yet, Eric said we'll have to move him to the next meeting.
Okay.
Unless he comes in in time.
Yeah, unless he somehow comes in.
Wow, thank you so much.
Okay, Mark, your turn. I, Mark Martinez.
I, Mark Martinez.
Subject to the penalties of perjury.
Subject to the penalties of perjury.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold.
That I will support and uphold.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the Charter and Ordnances.
And the Charter and Ordnances.
Of the city of Alamosa.
Of the city of Alamosa.
And faithfully inform.
And faithfully inform.
The duties of councillor Ward for.
The duties of councillor Ward for.
Okay, Mayor, I think we have to move Jan's to next meeting.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, could you repeat that one second for me?
So it appears with councillor V. Hill not here, we will move his swearing-in to the next meeting.
Okay, we will do that.
Which means we're on to the consent agenda then.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, the consent agenda. Councillor Hensley?
I'll go ahead and move to approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Councillor Jackie V. Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, regular business, uh Homeless Coalition Annual Update. I believe we have Ms. Donna Weehi here today.
There's then, okay. Hi, Donna Weehi, Chair of the Alamosa City Homeless Coalition, along with some fellow members of the group. Vern Hearsink from the county, Judy McNeil Smith from La Puente, and Don Melgaris with the Housing Coalition, Housing Authority.
Coalition.
Coalition, you said it right, okay. So I'm just gonna quick um give an update and then if you'd like, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions. So we now meet every other month, so that was a change that we took on this last year. And once again, there was a significant amount of time that was spent focused on St. Benedict's. We covered some of the rules and we modified some of the rules and we addressed an issue that came up during the year and that is an unaccompanied youth cannot be in the campsite. And so we added that rule. Anything else on the rules? And so far, they're pretty successful, so. Hi, Jan.
There's been good, there's been good communication between the police force and street outreach around when there's some questions about coming back in. They met yesterday and are clarifying um some discrepancies there, so that's been a good ongoing relationship.
Then we provided, um one of our members of our group is Lily Wasinski and she's a student at Alamosa High School and she um asked if we could look into having free food pantries around town, so not just where the food bank is, but in other locations. And it was a good discussion that we had. I don't know that we came to any action on that item. And then we stayed up to date on all the housing projects. So a big portion of our meeting is Dawn um letting us know because obviously we're the homeless coalition and the answer to homeless is housing. So she gives us these updates from Horizon Heights, the Century Mobile Home Park, Boyd School, the CRHDC Housing, and then the Alamosa Housing Authority. So all of these are options for people to get into housing that we discuss at our meetings. And then we stay up to date on the La Puente operations. Currently coming up, there's gonna be some changes in leadership, but whenever there are different positions for people who in different roles that might uh work with authorities or with the homeless, we always get their updates in their in their employment. And then um there were some federal impacts happening with AmeriCorps this year, so we discussed that and wrote some letters and took some action and cheered when we found out that they got funded. And there are federal implications on the food bank, as we all know, and the cold weather plans were continually discussed. And one of the ongoing ones that we want to do more with this next year too is public education. Kind of what Mr. Dominguez was talking about earlier today is sometimes there's a lot of um things that are out there that aren't maybe the truth. And then uh Captain Brandon Birch gave an update to us on some of their numbers and and usually law enforcement is at our advisory meetings and we can ask questions to them and get updates from them. Currently, as of December 2nd, there are eighteen residents at St. Benedict's. They've processed eight renewals, which is what they're calling the six-month extension because one of the rules is that it is a temporary camp and some for some reasons, some people can't uh leave within the six months and so they get an extension. And um not all of those individuals reside in the camp, but they are kind of tracking that. And then there's transportation support, so the city will buy bus tickets and for 2025, there were ninety vouchers totaling $2,304 purchased for busing and twenty-eight tickets for $5,818.18 on Greyhound. And additionally, fourteen individuals have been trespassed for incidents ranging from cleanliness violations and advancement of services to substances use, drug dealing, and threatening behavior. None of the trespassers have been reevaluated for re-entry. The camp remains clean and well-maintained thanks to the diligent work of the community service officers and the co-responder program. On some days, maintaining the camp alone requires a CSO to be there at least four hours to ensure compliance and to update records because this report doesn't happen if they're not out there collecting the data and talking to folks. In other words, it's a big shout-out to this group for their diligent behind-the-scenes work this year. They've done a great job, so I'll ask my committee members if there's anything else to add. Okay, questions, comments?
Okay, I'll open it up here for our council members to make any questions or comments and I'll recognize you by uh turning on your mic. See, I don't see uh any lights on, that's amazing. So I guess I have to say something. Thank you all so very much for for the report and and sharing that information with us. It's very helpful for us to hear about the successes as well as some of the challenges that happens out there because overall, we want to make sure that the community's safety and well-being is at the forefront of all of this. And um we always recognize our county commissioners and Commissioner Vern Hearsink. Thank you for being here as well. Counsel, I mean, I was calling you councillor Weehi, but Ms. Weehi and the rest of the team, thank you also very much. Okay, thank you. So can I ask Eric and Heather a question real quick in in regards to our agenda and where we are right now, since councillor Jan V. Hill was running a little bit behind because of the weather? Is it proper to go backwards to um?
What would be proper would be a motion to amend the agenda to insert, re-insert that somewhere. It doesn't have to be now, it whenever, uh just somewhere in the meeting if you want to do that. Otherwise, it would be next meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to what Eric just said.
Do you want to do it now? Do you want to do it at the end? Where do you want to do it?
Um, to do it now.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, please start voting.
Councillor Jackie V. Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay.
Mayor?
What? I'm good, how you doing?
Hi, Jackie. All right. If you're in house, please repeat after me. Sergeant Yan V. Hill.
Hi, Yan V. Hill.
Subject to the penalty of perjury.
Subject to penalty of perjury.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support your call.
That I will support your call.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of the State of Colorado.
Of the United States and the State of Colorado.
As the Charter and ordinances. Of the City of Alamosa.
The City of Alamosa.
That may fully perform.
May fully perform.
That you can tell the Councilor at large.
That you can tell the Councilor at large.
Tag about number 10.
Tag about number 10.
Okay, so we're back on track. And we'll go to Regular Business, Public Works. First reading of Ordinance Number 26-2025, an ordinance prohibiting the use of gray water and installation of gray water treatment works within the City of Alamosa.
Thank you, Mayor. I was elected to do this since I was the one who wrote the darn thing. And really, the simple matter is gray water is the portion of wastewater that's collected from bathrooms, laundry rooms, bathtubs. It is essentially anything other than the sewer, the toilet system. That can be recaptured and reused under certain circumstances. Up until last year, becoming effective in January of 2026, the default position was gray water could not be used in the state of Colorado unless the jurisdiction had enacted an ordinance allowing for its use and putting in whatever kinds of provisions would be appropriate to that. Now, changing effective January 1 of 2026, the default position is that gray water can be used unless the municipality, in our case, or governing jurisdiction, enacts an ordinance that prohibits its use. So we changed from a position of we don't have to deal with gray water unless we specifically decide we want to, to now we have to deal with gray water unless we specifically decide that we don't want to. And staff in the Public Works Department has determined that while there may be some advantages to permitting gray water systems, we do not have the expertise to effectively and safely administer those systems. And the recommendation coming from Public Works staff is to prohibit gray water usage within the City of Alamosa. That's what this ordinance does.
Okay, so.
Actually, yeah, that is what this ordinance does.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn over to Counselor Yan V. Hill.
Mayor, thank you. Quick question. Can you give me an example of, you said there's no systems in place, or we don't have the expertise. Would that be like at a citywide level, or?
The expertise would be within the city to both come up with the kinds of regulations that we would need to put in place that we don't currently have to be able to govern gray water, or gray water recycling. And then the other expertise is how do we monitor that? How do we ensure that that's being done in a way that keeps public health from being endangered?
Thank you. Counselor Carson?
I disagree, wholeheartedly, because of some of the stuff I'm working through in regards to water. And as we try to pioneer our way through many things in the world and in the current climate, I don't see why we wouldn't try to figure this out. I mean, one of the things that I'm thinking about, and you know, I'm not a public works expert, but I know that there's the possibility of figuring out a waiver system or some sort of system that would require the homeowner to have an expert installation or some sort of installation of that system, and then sign a waiver removing liability of the city. Just because if the water's not directly from the sewer, I think there's enough technology out there that people can pay for that system if they want to try to conserve water, not even from a cost standpoint for the city or for the citizen, but from a, water's very finite. And anything that we can do to preserve it, I think we should at least give it a shot. My point is, is that I don't think we should cold, like, I won't support this wholeheartedly all the way through without doing some, a little bit more research on what the real negatives are. So I'd at least like to have a conversation around this, for sure, because I think there is definitely ways to look into it. Again, you may prove me wrong, Eric, and again, you know, I just want to be enlightened more before I just say there's no way that we can support something like this. So that's my position at this point. I haven't read through the ordinance, so please forgive me for that. But at this point, from my personal standpoint, and some of the conversations that I had today around water, and there's other things that we can chat about later. But yeah, I need to think about this a lot.
Counselor Krebs and Counselor Hensley next.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, just a clarifying question on the communication. And just in general, so for gray water, it is sounding like the City of Alamosa currently does not have a treatment facility or a way to treat gray water at this time, as it comes out of buildings.
Gray water, we don't, so right now, the status quo is gray water is not allowed type of thing. And so all, when it goes, the water leaves, the sinks, the toilet, it all goes into the sewer system, goes to our wastewater treatment plant, gets cleaned, and then gets put into the river. This allows for the, using gray water allows for the capture of certain types of that to then be repurposed either on turf or in another, some type of manner, type of situation. So there's not treatment through the city type of thing. So, you know, so to add, for us, we looked at this a bit as housekeeping, because right now, it's not allowed. The state went and changed the language. We just want to keep it the same, because there's nothing in place effective January 1st for when the state has flipped it type of thing.
Got it, thank you very much.
Counselor Hensley.
So my question is that, obviously, at any point, if we gather data and find that maybe we should relook at gray water, we can always come back and switch this. But at this point, because of the state law, we kind of need to put something in place, since we don't have anything and we haven't done the research. And I will say, being from California, we definitely used a lot of gray water, but I know also a lot of research went into it before using it. And this is over 25 years ago, because I've been here that long. But I guess I would support this at this point till the, you know, more research was done, and it would be easy enough to switch back.
And I would say that you are correct. And by allowing us then to keep the status quo, since there is not something in place, it also allows that if there is a majority of council that wants to look into this, we can time it from a workload perspective as well, knowing some of the bigger projects, like the comp plan and a few things like that, that we're getting ready to kick off.
Deacon? Go ahead.
I just had a little bit of clarifying information that might help some of the context. I think philosophically, there's no disagreement about the benefits. The biggest issue when we were looking at some of the CDPE regulations that would be required for us to implement what is being enacted at the state level was just something that we don't have the expertise or capacity to do. CDPE has been kind of changing some of those regulations. So, you know, I think some of that could certainly change in the foreseeable future. But that was really, when we were looking at it, there's a lot that was involved from a state regulation standpoint that we just don't have the ability to enforce.
Okay, Counselor Carson?
So, I guess I'm, and again, I hadn't read the ordinance, so it's, I'm a little confused. Or do we have zero homes in the town that have gray water systems right now? There's, it's not. Because I'm talking about internally, as a, what I'm talking about, Counselor Krebs, is that it's a system that would like, the sink water that's coming out of your sink would then be internally repurposed to be used in your toilet or whatever. Okay, it's not, I wasn't talking about citywide implementation. I'm talking about internal home systems that I've seen been built. So that's, I was a little confused in that. Is that not, is that, we don't have a single home in town? And if there was a home with a system like that, would it be?
It would be illegal.
It would be illegal.
Yeah. Because currently, under state law, you can't have them unless the town has an ordinance to regulate them, and we don't. And so you can't have them. Whether people do or not is a different question, but it would be illegal.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, Counselor Henson?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve an ordinance Number 26-2025 on first reading and set for a public hearing on December 17th, 2025, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Real quick, real quick, Mayor. I just want the record to be known that I would like to look at this at a future date through a work session. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion, please start voting.
Counselor Jackie V. Hill? Counselor Jackie V. Hill? You've put yourself on mute, Counselor V. Hill.
You still on?
You're still on mute.
Yeah, if you vote yes, how about you raise your hand? Thank you.
Okay, okay, the motion carried 6 to 1 with Counselor Carson casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Public hearing and second reading for Ordinance Number 202025, establishing the 2026 Pay Plan for City Officers.
Oh, is that it? Okay, so this is the second reading. Second reading, and then we'll have a public hearing, obviously. Usually, if we are doing the pay plan, it's if we've had any changes, which I'll go over as far as specific positions. Sometimes we also do it in regards to if we are able to have a cost of living adjustment. As we know, looking at the 2026 budget, our projected revenues did not allow us to have a cost of living adjustment. So the whole pay plan is not shifting. So I just want to make sure that that is clear. What the changes are, though, is there is a 2.4% increase in the state minimum wage. So there are a few positions that are listed in the ordinance that are not necessarily in the pay plan, but they are either at the state minimum wage, which is currently 2.4% less. And then we have one or two positions that we're just a little bit above. So the new ordinance would increase the minimum wage to the state minimum wage, as well as the one or two positions that need to still be a little bit above those positions. It's like the Parks and Rec Site Supervisor, those types of kind of hourly and seasonal type of positions. The other change that this ordinance incorporates is bringing over the five FTEs from Center for Restorative Programs for our lead program. And so it's placing them at the appropriate places in the pay plan type of situation. And then the third one is from the succession planning perspective. We are removing the position of the Water Wastewater Technician 3 and allocating that FTE to the position of a Water Wastewater Plant Technician. And so that helps line up from a succession planning. If we have either of our operators leave, retire, that we will have individuals in place with the right certifications. And so that is the three changes that is in, for the pay plan for this ordinance.
Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing for Ordinance Number 2025, establishing the 2026 Pay Plan for City Officers and Employees. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, now would be the time to come up to the podium and make your comments. Okay, I don't see anybody in the audience coming up to the podium, so we'll go ahead and have Ms. Martinez give instructions to the Zoom audience of how to raise their hands to participate in this public hearing.
Sir, if you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're going to dial *9. Mayor, I don't see any hands being raised.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Counselor Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading Ordinance Number 25-2025.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Quarterly Update on the Downtown and Housing Plans.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Rachel is back on Monday, so this is the last time you'll see me with my shining face, filling in. So since September 1st, it's largely been a little bit of a status quo, kind of let's keep some of our projects moving. We've also had some really exciting things that have kind of buttoned up. Go ahead, Holly. So as you may know, we are building a hotel downtown. So obviously, that's a big deal. Economically, that's a huge impact. But we also don't want to, you know, ignore the fact that the Alamosa Courthouse, beautiful historic building, which had kind of been neglected for a few years, is right on the cusp of opening. If you haven't done a tour of it, it's beautiful how they've really respected the structure. So that's very exciting. And then finally, we did the FOR, which is the Final Office Review, with CDOT just last week. And that's essentially where we review sort of the last plans and start kind of figuring out what are the intricacies we need to be staging for, you know, the bidding process and things like that, just because it's different than ours. So since then, we conducted an interview for Community Builders' 10-year anniversary. So Community Builders has helped Alamosa out several times in a variety of ways. I think the most notable has been the Building Better Places Conference that we attended to about three weeks before the pandemic started. I think, to me, I always think of that as being a very influential pivot point in Alamosa's sort of projection. The other thing is that the Main Street Manager Summit in Lyons are planning to, Technician Beata Ramza attended that, and she wanted me to make sure to reiterate she had never seen Mayor Coleman speak before, and how engaging and well-received. And we're a pretty popular group, so that was very exciting.
Thank you.
So as far as housing, so, folks, the infrastructure's in for Tera Soul. So we have permit sets for the 30plexes, a 30plex, a couple of 8plexes, and the clubhouse. So, I mean, really, fingers crossed, weather's good. Ground will be breaking for units in March. So, I mean, that's a big deal for us. It's been a long time coming, and we're excited to see some vertical construction. Another sort of thing, you know, I don't want to spoil too many details. However, we've got another development for some market-rate housing, single-family and duplexes, probably the largest market-rate subdivision we've seen in quite some time. And that's kind of in the pre-development stages. So we've got kind of some of the engineering steps laid out, and that's coming sooner than later. And then finally, we talked to Dawn Melgaris about their new Boyd proposal. Folks, I'm really excited about it. First of all, it's got one of my favorite planning concepts, a vu nerf, for our Dutch fans. It's essentially a curbless street that is meant to be something like a plaza, pedestrian. like a plaza, pedestrian, and sort of parking area all wrapped into one. It's a really beautiful way that they're, they've gone about it. So that new layout is certainly going to be easier to fund and construct. The biggest thing is the reduction in different foundations. So you may remember, you, you passed an ordinance that allowed for contextually sensitive construction to essentially eliminate some potential barriers. And, you know, essentially, if you have one building that has 40 units versus four buildings with 10 units, same amount of units, but the, the cost is substantially more expensive because what goes into that foundation. So this is really exciting for us. So we had two really big outings with two separate DOLA teams. So the first, we hosted the Proposition 123 compliance team. They came in and, and we gave them a nice tour. We are actually featured in their newsletter, which was pretty fun. And so essentially, you may remember the voters passed a few years ago, Proposition 123, which sets aside some state funding that is dedicated towards housing. Right now, we are targeted to get about $50,000, or $50,000 in Prop 123 money, which will help for our comp plan, for the housing plan element of that. And then we had the entire DOLA leadership in town, so we took them to Boyd and Tera Soul. We also did show them the Early Childhood Learning Center. And so that was also really a pretty excellent endeavor. All right, so you guys get a bonus slide, and Holly's gonna, she, she's gonna have to click a lot, because I'm gonna roll this out kind of slowly. Go ahead. So one of the things that's been in the back of my head, you know, because this is a comp plan, okay, there's a lot of traditional elements in a comp plan, economic stuff, future land use. But this is a bit more than that, because it includes an update to our downtown plan. It includes an update to our housing needs assessment, has our water efficiency plan, a climate resiliency plan. There's, there's an awful lot involved. So I've wanted like a, a good acronym to kind of explain this. So I've been thinking, mother of all plans, well, that's not great. So we were kind of spitballing. So the first one was the giant, go ahead, which is the, the giant integrated plan Alamosa for the next 10 years. It's not very good. Okay, so what was the next one we were kind of thinking about? Amazed. Alamosa master attempt at zoning everything document. So that was, that was kind of our next, next go. It's like, okay, that, that doesn't quite get what we're after. Our city attorney came up with this one, mother, which stands for Master Unifying Template Honoring Alamosa. I liked AMT, because I'm very excited about this entire process. And it's kind of pedestrian. It's the Alamosa Master Plan Document, Planning Document. So nothing too exciting. Well, we started coming up with a few better ones. Magic, our magic plan. So that's the Master Alamosa Growth in Community. That one's a little bit better. How about the Grande for the Rio Grande? That one's starting to get closer, Growing Alamosa's Resilience in the Next Decade. I forgot the E. I think it was for everyone. And then Crane, this, this one is, is from our, our project manager. He came up with this one. This one, I think, is my favorite. Crafting Resilience for Alamosa's Next Era. I like that one. So the reality is, whoever we, we hire for this is going to come up with a better name. But, you know, all of this aside, I hope you all become as excited about this process as, as I am. So the AMT plan or the Crane plan, that's, that's what I'm going to call it, at least for this evening. Go ahead, Holly. So being serious, go ahead. Sorry, it's slow. This is a big deal, guys. Comprehensive plans are always big, but this one is particularly large, because it really does, it touches every aspect that we do. I mean, we have kind of our day-to-day sorts of things that, that we, we all are, are working on. But I mean, when you think about everything from the Street Trust Fund Initiative to our, our housing endeavors, you know, we, we had the Homeless Coalition, that's certainly, I imagine, going to be a topic in this coming comprehensive plan. Really, it, it involves everything. And I'm really happy to say that we got eight fantastic responses for this, which came in early last week. And folks, it's going to be really, really hard for us to, to, to find, really even picking the top three is going to be a challenge. So we're really fortunate, it's a fortunate curse to have so many good options. So go ahead. So really, this is kind of what we've got. One of the things that we internally wanted to make sure, you know, we always talk about, we want, we want better engagement. We want, we want to hear from people that we aren't hearing from. We say that over and over, and it's really hard. It's hard to figure out how we go about that. And so one of the biggest things that we stressed in our request for proposals was that the engagement has to be key. And so I'm, I am really grateful that everyone took that very seriously. You know, a, a lot of them picked up on some of the language diversity we have in Alamosa. So we have many Spanish speakers, not all the same dialect. And we also have a healthy Guatemalan population. How are we engaging these people? I don't speak Concha Val, so I don't know. I don't know how we do that. But fortunately, essentially, all of the folks that, that responded to this have, have ideas to help us engage some of these folks that, that we, we want to hear from, and we just have not figured out how to engage. So all that said, I mean, we can figure out how to do a lot of stuff, but at the end of the day, we, we want to hear from the public what it is, how they want to direct Alamosa for the next really 10, 12 years. So that's, that's that.
Okay, all right. So let me see if we have any comments here from council. Any comments from anyone?
Real, real quick, Mayor.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Just really appreciate your excitement. Deacon, it's, it just makes me feel good, and I'm happy that you're happy. And there you go.
This is, this is a very Pollyanna thing, but, you know, I'll be honest, one of the proposals made me tear up. It was beautiful. It was beautiful to see how much they already, they know and love Alamosa, and how much they want to honor it. And when you read all of these, these, it's like, wow, they want to come, like, help us figure out how we can, you know, serve our citizenry. It's, it's, it's infectious. And so please, please, I mean, I know we still have the applications open, so if you all know of anybody who might be interested, it's a really big deal. So thank you.
Thank you, Deacon. Great job, and I appreciate the energy. And those are some pretty cool acronyms you have. Good job. Alrighty. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Okay, I don't see any hands raised or lights on, so there are no committee reports. Next, we have staff announcements.
Okay, let me flip. I need to get to my list here. Really, it's just two items. Our Parks and Rec team have been working for Friday's event of the Celebration of Lights. And so for those of you who are able to make it, it's really just a great visual and experience of what it means to be in a community that cares and, and comes together for the holidays. And so Counselor Krebs will be leading it this year, and it should be a good time. So I think the music and, and free hot chocolate starts at 5:30 with the speeches and lighting starting at 6:00. And then the last comment ties a little bit into what Deacon's message was, which is we really do need your help encouraging individuals to volunteer for both the comp plan, but also the Citizen Street Committee. The Citizen Street Committee deadline is the 12th, the comp plan is the 19th. Don't get hung up on just encouraging people from your ward. We need volunteers. You guys will interview them. So it's okay to get four from one ward. That would be amazing type of thing for, from an interview perspective. And it could be, we don't get a lot from an at-large or something like that. So please encourage away. Both of those committees are so very important.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Okay, that brings us to the next item. Counsel, oh, Counselor Jan V. Hill, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, council comments. Counselor Jan V. Hill, then Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to apologize to council for being late tonight. The roads coming back from center were atrocious. So I took my time, and I'm excited to get back on council. I'm honored to work with Mr. Mark Martinez. I'm glad you're part of our team now, and I wanted to just give a shout out to Jamie Dominguez and how awesome it was to work with him and, and the passion he brought for the people he served and his ward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jan V. Hill. Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to officially welcome Mr. Martinez to the council. Glad to see you here. And I look forward to seeing everyone, everyone, on Friday at the tree lighting ceremony. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
Want to welcome Mr. Martinez to the council, and, and welcome back, Jan, Don, and you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Martinez?
I just want to thank everybody for the warm welcome. And I know Jamie's got like clown-sized shoes to fill, but I'm going to do my best.
Thank you, and welcome. Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up. I want to thank all the community members and voters who voted to reelect me to office. And I want you to know that I don't, don't take this role lightly, and really proud and honored to represent the residents here in the community. I want to thank the staff that we have at the city, which makes this job truly amazing, working around so many intelligent people and all the people who volunteer on all our different committees to help give us positive feedback. Jamie was a, a great person to have on council, and I'm looking forward to working with Counselor Martinez. Also want to thank our city council members that I get a chance to work with here every month, and the hard work and dedication that you put in to your efforts as well. And finally, I want to thank my family for allowing me the opportunity to have the time that I have to participate on council. And then finally, Counselor Krebs, thank you for hosting and helping out with the Celebration of Lights this weekend. I'm going to miss it this year because of travels that won't allow me to be back here in Alamosa before I leave to go to Texas. So thank you all. I hope everyone have a good rest of your night. This meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you.